Allegiance, airbag please stand.
Let's pray. Your heavenly father, we do thank you for this day that you've given us. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to assemble here. And lord, as we come to you this evening, we ask your wisdom and direction upon all decisions that are made, every issue that's brought before that we'd act in the interest of our citizens, lord, know that it's them that we represent here and it's them that we serve as we serve you. Be with each one, protect families, each one here in our city, compete with our officers, give them safety, their family strength. Again, bless our night, we ask in Jesus's name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Jim?
I move that we approve the agenda.
And George Glover?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Sean, did you have anything? Okay, alright, we don't have anything for awards presentations, nobody signed up to speak at public forum, and we have nothing for staff reports this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, there's a motion. John?
Motion to approve all five items on the consent agenda.
And Jen, or I mean, sorry, George?
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item six, which is discuss and consider appointment to the library board. So, we have recently had somebody that had to step off to the library board, and we were able to fill that right away, so I just recommend a motion to approve. John?
Mayor, I felt like her application looks like she's got a great will to serve, and I would make a motion that we appoint Emily Kittle to serve on the library board with her term expiring in 2023.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item seven, which is consider the approval of a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of a 2019B general obligation bonds and 2019-1 temporary notes.
Good evening, Larry Kleeman with Ranson Financial, the city's financial advisor. Before you is a resolution which authorizes the city to sell its general obligation bonds and temporary notes. Bids on these would be due before your next month's meeting, which I think is September 24th, and so I would be back here next month with the bids, and then you can approve the lowest interest, the best bid for each of these, the bonds and the notes. The bonds are scheduled to be paid by special assessments. We've already been through the process this past summer in order to levy the special assessments, so the debt service on these 15-year bonds should be paid from the property owners that are benefiting from the improvements that were put in and paid for by these bonds. And the temp notes are also to finance temporarily, new construction, infrastructure, and I think some bridge improvements as well. And then, I think there's a three-year bond, callable in one year, so eventually we'll bond these as well. Do you have any questions on the numbers or documents? I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I'll be back here next month.
Does anybody have any questions? Not seeing any. Jim?
Yeah, I have no questions on it, so I would move that we approve, sorry, I'm grabbing it here on the agenda. We moved, I would move that we approve resolution number 1032-2019, authorizing the sale for sale of general obligation bonds, series 2019B, and general obligation temporary notes, series 2019-1 of the city of Park City, Kansas.
And Brandy?
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanher.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes seven zero. That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider a special use permit to request to construct a travel center overnight trucking parking. Sean?
Good evening, mayor and council. The owner of the property located at the northeast corner of 53rd Street and Air Cap Drive has applied for a special use permit, which would allow for the establishment of a travel center slash overnight truck parking use on the property, which is currently zoned C2 commercial service business district. The applicant is requesting to construct a convenience store with fueling pumps, an attached quick service restaurant, and parking spaces to accommodate up to six overnight truck parking spaces. Public notice was provided in the city's official newspaper for publication on July 18th, and a total of four notifications were sent to all adjacent property owners within 200 feet of the property. As of the release of the staff memo, there have been zero responses, either in for or against. There are 17 findings of facts that were presented to the planning commission on August 12th, and it was a seven oh recommendation for approval from the planning commission. There's no identifiable cost to the city for approving a special use permit, and staff recommends approval, but making certain that we highlight and limit it to the six spaces that they've requested. Got a couple different slides. We could go to the next slide, please. Here's a layout of the site plan currently. I know that there was a little bit of concern about the right-in, right-off off of 53rd Street when the property was platted back in 2011. That's part of KDOT's access control point, and so it is platted within the plat that they would have that, and they'll have to go to KDOT to get approval for that. But that's the way it's laid out. They currently have the first four lots under contract, and they would like the SUP to apply to the four lots, but right now their site plan has only got construction planned on the first three lots. We could go to the next slide. We have a couple slides of their elevations proposed. Okay, there's an aerial shot, and then the next two would be their proposed elevations. Next slide, please. It's a little bit different look than their previous Quick Shops. Recently, the company was bought out by EG America, and this is their design or take. They currently have two under construction, and actually, this is the elevation of the one that's supposed, that's under construction right now in Topeka off of Burlingame Road. So, it's just a rendering, it's not indicating that it's going to be an Arby's as the quick service restaurant, because we know Arby's right across the street. Next slide, please. And there would be for us, what would be our west elevation and north elevation? And mayor, pending any questions, that's all I have.
Okay, Ben?
I like the idea of now having some new construction going on down there in the Echo Hills, so I'd move to approve a special use permit, SU 2019-02, to establish a travel center overnight truck parking use in C-2 service business district on lots one through four, block A, Echo Hills addition, and to approve ordinance 1074, or sorry, 1073-2019.
Tom, did you want to second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion. I had some
Go ahead.
Concerns on this, and I've talked a little bit to our administrator about it. They're cramming a lot of stuff on a little lot, and I keep looking at access and egress there, especially two slides back where they're less than 200 feet from a exit on the freeway.
Off the freeway, yes sir.
And it's in a right turn lane, so you're gonna have people egressing to go into the road or the access to this next street up, and you have cars pulling out in front of them, and it'll be kind of like QuickTrip in Jacksonville, a little farther apart. Then I see issues with the side of the building where we've got, on this right here, right here's where your driveway's gonna be, and it's pretty close.
Ted, can you go back one, please? There we go.
Yeah, see, here's your, here's the corner of the lots, right here. But then you've got access out of here where you're coming in out of the drive-through, and there's two of them there. You've got sharp left turns, I don't know if a big vehicle can get through there on a 12-foot wide road. Plus, you've got the drive-through, and then they're gonna be pulling back to the people going out and in to that entrance there, there's nothing, there's very little space.
Yes, sir.
So, I just have concerns with it, and then I have trouble with the trucks coming in the back way on the entrance there and being able to turn and get in the fuel stations, pretty tight.
Yes, sir. We have Charlie Brown, the engineer for this particular project, he's here, if
You want to come up and address some of that?
And this is different than the truck parking, but I'm just saying the whole site, just, they've got 50 things on a lot for 25 pieces, it looks like, so.
Good evening, Charlie Brown with PEC, Professional Engineering Consultants in Wichita. We are the agent for EG America, which is Quick Shop, formerly owned by Dillons and Kroger. This is a concept drawing, obviously, at this point, we have not proceeded any farther than this as far as geometrics, hard location of the buildings, the fuel centers, and that sort of thing. Certainly, those concerns are things that we look at when we get into the hard design, the, we have a computer program called Autoturn that we can take any size vehicle and run it through the property, make sure it fits, and there's, you know, it's not gonna run into a pump or a, or a building or whatever. So, yeah, just keep in mind, this is a concept drawing. The opening off of 53rd is located generally per the plat, which was done 12 years ago. There is an opening designated on the plat that shows exactly where that right-in, right-out only, and that's right-in, right-out simply because there's a median in 53rd Street that they're not gonna cut through that. So, traffic coming in and out of, off of that driveway, close to the interstate, right turns only, they will go into the thing, some of them will come out and make a right turn to leave. Others that want to go back to the interstate or go east on 53rd will go out to Air Cap Drive and that location. The traffic impact study that was done, when the plat was done, by another firm, again in 2007, I believe, they assumed that a full development of all of that property, various uses. I think there was a Lowe's and a convenience store, maybe some multifamily. Ultimately, how it gets developed may be similar to that, may be a little different, depends on the market and, you know, who buys what. Eventually, there was a signal warranted through that traffic impact study at Air Cap Drive and 53rd. The right turn lane that we're proposing, and again, allowed per the plat, really has very little impact on the traffic at that intersection of 53rd and Air Cap. So, again, those things that you are concerned about, there is a lot of, there's a lot of pavement, a lot of building, a lot of whatever in that small space. We'll make sure it works, your city engineer will get to look at our layouts and critique it as well, so.
Is this the same style of building that's going up at West Street in Kellogg?
Well, since the, since the European company bought out Quick Shop, they took about a year to really figure out what they bought, what they're gonna do with it, what properties they have, and they have come up with a new concept, I guess, if you want to call it that, for their, for their building. The one at Kellogg and West is under construction. I've been told that that is too expensive for their particular financial model, I guess. They're looking at ways to decrease cost. I don't know if that is different size of building, different materials, what it is, and they were reluctant to even give us a copy of the site plans for, or building elevations for this, because they are in the middle of reevaluating what their prototype is really gonna look like. The one in, that Sean mentioned in Topeka, where it's not quite ready for construction, we are wrapping up design of that. That building is very similar to the one at Kellogg and West Street. Most of their new concepts have a small restaurant element to the building, thus the need for the drive-through. The one in Kellogg and West, I believe, is gonna be a Taco John's. The one in Topeka is gonna be an Arby's, but they have Starbucks and Subway and those types of build, of businesses that join them in these, in these newer concepts, so. Like I said, just remember it's a concept, it's not, it's not hard, hard design, but your concerns are very valid, and we'll certainly be looking at all of those things as we really do the construction documents.
Working with KDOT and stuff, which I've done a little bit lately, they usually won't allow access that close to an exit ramp anymore, and so I've got a concern with that.
Okay, and if we
About to say it wasn't platted, but I'm saying you still got
All the traffic goes to Air Cap and comes in that way. The right-in, right-out only will help that, I don't know if that will allow them to approve it or not, but that location, evidently, that was discussed 12 years ago when we did the, somebody did the plat to allow that opening on the plat, so that, it's allowable from, from the plating point of view, but we still have to get the KDOT permission.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
I got sidetracked here, but I got, I just wanted it out, so.
Thank you, good comments, thank you.
I think one thing, there, I mean, we're always excited about seeing a new business to come, it's exciting to see another large fuel station that's gonna come to town, I think we're, some people might be a little uneasy is, in the materials and the actual, what we're seeing for elevation, what the plan is, and we know what Quick Shop has done in the past, and they, they do build some really nice buildings, and to think that we're gonna come back and do something a little bit lower in status than what they've done in the past, we just remember, need to remember as a council, you know, when we get this planner in place, this is where we solve our problems, and we start coming up with design standards. So, we can't really be too picky until we get decide standards in place and have that out there for businesses. So, anybody that might be feeling uneasy, just know that from a planning perspective, we're moving in the process of getting to where we can set design standards and expectations on what fit and finish looks like, and that might be where some people are, are not cheering.
John?
Just for the folks watching at home, I guess, if you, the, your parking lot surface will be, I assume, will be concrete or blacktop? It won't be in gravel or anything like that, that'd probably be the main concern.
No, no, it's total concrete. In the past, they've done some with asphalt, but they're getting away from that, it's total, total concrete.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay. Not seeing any further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanher.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Tom Jones.
Nay.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes six one. Thank you, Mr. Brown. That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider vacating a portion of the building setback line for construction of an office addition at 5545 Mill Heights Drive. Sean?
Yes, sir. Tech Aerospace is requesting to vacate the west 15 feet of a platted 35-foot building setback requirement for a length of 200 feet to add additional office space on the east side of their building, which is currently a concrete parking lot. Staff is uncertain as to why the original plat identified or even required a side setback, as that's not typical or required in this particular zoning district, but it's there, so we have to address it. The utility companies have been notified, and there is noted on the drawing that there is a gas main located in a 20-foot utility easement on the far east side of the property. The applicants are well aware of the gas main, and their plans do not conflict with it. A public notice was provided in the city's official newspaper on July 18th. Total of five notification letters were sent, again, to adjacent property owners, and as of the release, there are, again, no responses in favor or against. The application, 17 findings of fact, were presented to the planning commission on August 12th, and again, with a seven zero recommendation for approval. And we have a couple slides for council to look at on this one as well. The first one is the plat. There we go. Right there where the orange is at the top, that's where they're planning on, on building the addition onto the building. And then the next picture is just an aerial that shows where the gas main is. And then there's a couple pictures of how it sits today, the concrete parking lot that they plan on using.
Pending any questions, mayor, that's all I have. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Or a recommendation from the council? Ben?
I move to approve here, this ordinance here, or this action here to vacate a portion of the building setback line established by original plat to construct an office addition on lot one, block one, Park City Industrial Park, second addition, commonly known as 5545 Mill Heights Drive, in the I-1 light industrial district.
Okay, Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider an approval of a contract with Baughman Company PA for consulting services to assist in the administration of land use regulations and planning services. Sean?
Yes, sir. Planning Department is responsible for the future planning, development, and orderly growth of the community, through its, and also the community's general welfare through the enforcement of the city's codes, ordinances, building inspections, and through the establishment and implementation of standards. Through zoning and subdivision regulations, the planning department assists the council, planning commission, zoning board of appeals, property owners, developers, and citizens in regards to new growth development and building renovations and/or modifications. To better serve the community, staff has solicited consulting services from Baughman Company to assist with the administration of land use regulations and planning services, more specifically to assist in zoning cases, to review plat applications, review conditional and special use applications, review general development related matters, assist with amendments to development regulations, and then attend planning commissions and council meetings as required. Per the attached proposed contract, Baughman Company would provide the services of Russ Ewi, a certified planner knowledgeable in city planning and zoning procedures, for a maximum of 20 hours per month unless otherwise directed. He would be acting as an independent contractor and would not be an employee of the city. The initial term of the agreement would be until December 31st of this year, at which time the contract would or could be revisited regarding the assigned duties and the total number of monthly hours assigned. When he first brought me the contract, I was a little bit concerned about 20 hours. Part of the insistence was that he spend some time here within the building with our staff, and so he's, we've got it scheduled right now to where he's gonna dedicate every Wednesday afternoon to be here. Of course, he'll be at planning commission meetings when he's required, as well as council if we have issues that come up like this. Baughman Company's philosophy is that they want to be very mindful of what they're doing and what they're charging the community as well. To me, 20 hours is pretty much by the time you figure out how much time he's gonna spend here at the office and at those meetings, that's, that's about 20 hours right there. So, I asked him, how are we handling the phone calls that are, that we're gonna start shuffling his way, and he's like, again, they're mindful of how they're perceived and the interaction. So, that's why we decided to do the contract only for four months until the end of this calendar year, and then we can both take a look at it realistically and realize, do we need to throw in additional hours to make certain that we're not taking advantage of him and vice versa. Under physical impact, I say that it's budgeted under the planning department salaries, but that's for FY '20. As far as the FY '19 budget that we're currently in, prior to Jack's departure, $60,000 was placed in the budget for engineering services. It was $20,000 for streets, $20,000 for planning, and $20,000 for administration. As it sits today, that has virtually gone untouched. Most of the projects that we've done, Kirk has been able to bill to the project rather than billing the city. So, that balance right now is sitting at more than $59,000 out of the 60. So, for the next four months, that's what we would propose, is utilize that funds to pay for the $10,000, the set rate and the number of hours for the next four months for Russ. So, staff recommends approval and authorizing the mayor to execute and finalize, finalize and execute a contract.
And does anybody have any questions? Ben?
I do have a question there on this. Up to this point, I know we've done work in the past with Baughman Company, they've done great work there. As far as the contract and searching for someone to help in the planning, or as a planner, is this something we sent out for proposal to solicit other, other companies or other individuals, or is this just solely?
I sought out three different companies, as well as an individual that I knew had this type of arrangement with one of our sister cities. Two of the companies just don't provide this type of service, they have contractual engineering basis, but planning, to have a contractual planner on the side, that's, that's a little bit different, and Baughman was the one. And as I mentioned, we reached out to another engineer, or planner, I should say, that's working for a sister city and had been doing that for the last 14 years, and kinda was wondering what her schedule would dictate or allow, and at this point in time, they just had some changes going with their city administrator, and she felt an obligation to support that city more and just didn't have the bandwidth in order to accommodate, so. Russ comes highly recommended, has got great credentials, and like I said, so we did farm it out best we could, we didn't do an official request for information or proposal along that.
Sure, I just, I wasn't sure on that part, I know they do great work, and I have no problem with that, I just didn't know if there was, and again, when you get to specialties, you, you limit your full options, so.
Yes, sir. Okay, Brandy?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Baughman Company PA for consulting services to assist in the administration of land use regulations and planning services in the amount not to exceed $10,000 to be paid, 50% from administration and 50% from planning budgets.
Okay, Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item 11, discuss and consider a contract for the sale of property located adjacent to 6110 North Hydraulic.
Yes, sir. 6110 North Hydraulic is the address of the old City Hall building. The property was sold to Tom Schmiedler, Schmiedler, in June of 2018, and has since undergone some renovations and been converted into senior living apartments. Old City Hall is now approximately 10 units, each one ranging anywhere between 580 and 620 square foot. The owner has requested or offered to purchase an additional, and this is a correction to what was in the package, 60 feet of the land across the rear of the property for a value of $3,675, with the intent to expand the building for an additional four to five two-bedroom apartments. The owner has also offered to cover the hall closing cost, and then to partner with the city on a 50/50 basis for the replating of the property. The property was platted several years ago, I believe, back in 2007, and just, if you've had a chance to see the plat, the land that this building currently sits on is on top of what would be dedicated right away for a road, and so it needs to be cleaned up, and as part of this transaction, the, the individual who's willing to buy the property is willing to partner with the city to go in 50/50 on that, so. Staff has consulted with Staff has consulted with both local area real estate agents and appraisers to determine the appropriate value for the land as far as cost per residential acreage, and the offer is consistent with our reasonable comparisons, so.
And I would say not only the offer, but we look at the potential raise and property value of that as well, that we would see benefit from too.
Again, originally, the offer was for 50 feet, but after running his plans by the fire department and everything, he would like to ensure that there's adequate space on the backside of the property to complete a fire lane access all the way around the property. And that's why he's modified and said, I need to purchase 60 feet back, so.
Okay, John?
Just a question I had for you. We were talking about the plating. Is there any discussion about, it's plated with Hebert Drive there, which actually goes through the salad port of the police station, I mean eventually, but I just wondering like if that does get replatted? Do we still own that land on the north side of that property too?
That we do. It is dedicated for the right of way, so yes, we own it. If we replat it and want to vacate it, then it would go back on a, basically on a 50-50 partnership between the two properties.
Or is this something too, that if we didn't do the vacating of that, we could sell that to the, either property owner on the north or the south? I don't really know how that works, but how does that?
No. We, before we could do a transaction, we need to vacate the right of way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tom?
I was gonna, I was just kind of curious if that replating would square up along with like Senior Center to the south? So would we pull the lots out and run that all the way across, or would that still drop back 60 feet? I don't know what the plat looks like right now. I assume there's a straight line across the back of that parking lot and the properties?
There is a straight line across the eastern edge
Right.
of Old City Hall and the Senior Center.
Okay.
So yes, we own that land.
Right.
And we're working with the old property owners on that to make certain that all the paperwork's appropriate. But yes, during the plating process, we could go ahead and identify and make the senior centers property bigger to match it.
I just wondered about while we were doing it, paying for it, getting them squared up, so.
Yes, sir.
Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Tom Schmiedler for the sale of property located adjacent to 6110 North Hydraulic Avenue, Park City, Kansas. Do we need to be specific on amounts or on?
Yes, I would be specific on exactly the amount.
It's 36.
75, 3675.
And the amount of 3675.
And for a 50-50 cost split on the replat?
Yes, for 50-50 cost split on the plat. Anything else you'd like me to add?
No.
Okay, we're good.
John?
Do you have a second, I'm sorry?
No, I don't.
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item 12, which is discuss and consider an amendment to the municipal code relating to yearly adoption of the Uniform Public Offense Code. Doug?
Mayor and council, these next two items, items 12 and 13, are really a kind of a function of us cleaning some things up, and again, I've told you in past meetings, some things in the code, this digitet transfer that we're doing, the police department's doing, to upgrade its ability to digitally issue citations in the future, has caused us to take a look at some of our ordinances and what item 12 is, is instead of us adopting every year the most current issue of the UPOC, or the Uniform Public Offense Code, that's put out by the League of Kansas Municipalities, what the ordinance does in item 12 is to do a self-execution by not referring to a specific year, but the most recent edition. And so that means that we don't need to amend that ordinance every year. It also means that references to 11-101 in digitet don't need to be changed every year or as amended. And then finally, there's a little tag on this, there is in the 2019 edition of the Uniform Public Offense Code, there is a duplication of an offense that duplicates one of our local regulations, and so our local regulation is in section 11-103, and that would be repealed by this ordinance, and then we would rely on that identical offense as it stated in the UPOC.
Okay, John?
So I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1071-2019.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herron.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Southsetton.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. That brings us to item 13, which is discuss and consider amendment to the municipal code relating to the yearly adoption of the standard traffic ordinance. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is just, this takes care of the standard traffic ordinance that's issued by the League of Municipalities, and so this just in section 14101 of our municipal code, this does the same thing, a self-executing adoption of the most recent edition, again, which makes it a little more smooth for the work that we do with digitet and avoiding some extra work. This has no duplication, so this is only an amendment to that section, and I would recommend that you adopt this ordinance.
Okay, Jim?
And I would move that we approve ordinance number 1072-2019.
And Brandy?
Second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herron.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Southsetton.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes 7-0. That brings us to item 14, which is consider an ordinance, amending existing ordinance establishing the regular meeting times and place of meetings of the city council. Doug?
Mayor and council, seems like everything I'm doing here is because we found something that's not right in our code or in our ordinances, but a question was raised several weeks ago about what would happen if the city council had a Tuesday meeting on Election Day, which we kind of have all the time, and there was some thought that maybe in years past, there'd been an ordinance adopted that said that we couldn't do that. So in searching for that, the good news is, I found that that's not the case. Your meetings can be held on primary election dates and on November election dates. But in finding the most recent ordinance that talked about when meetings would be held, we were good on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, but we weren't good on the address. We still had the old City Hall address where Mr. Schmiedler's building his units. So all this ordinance does is to repeal that ordinance and redirect our meeting places to present location at 1941 East 61st Street.
Okay, Jim?
Doug, I appreciate you catching this stuff and correcting and bringing it to our attention. So I would move to approve ordinance number 1070-2019, establishing the day and time of the regular meeting of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, and repealing ordinance number 204-89.
And George?
I'll second.
Second.
George Capps.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herron.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Southsetton.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes 7-0. That brings us to item 15, which is discuss and consider election of three voting delegates and three alternates to represent the city during the 2019 Annual League Conference. Dee?
The annual business meeting and policy session of the city voting delegates will be held at the annual league conference in Overland Park, and it will be on Monday, October 14th. Any elected or appointed officer of the city could be elected to be the delegates or the alternates. Based on our population, we're allowed to have three delegates and three alternates. There's seven of us that have signed up to attend that meeting. I am required to assign a number to each delegate and to each alternate, so there'll be delegate number one, two, and three, alternate number one, two, and three. So if delegate number one is unable to attend and vote, then alternate number one could attend in that person's place, the same with the twos and the threes. And so what I intend to do is to, for each of the blanks for the delegates, I'll just do them consecutively, number one, two, and three, and the same for the alternates, so you might keep that in mind as far as who your backup would be if you're electing somebody.
First thing we need to talk about, who's going? Who's going to be there on Monday?
I'm going, so. I think George is going.
George and Tom?
I don't know who else has signed up.
Would you like me to read the names?
Sure.
Council members Tom Jones, George Capps, Brandy Bailey, city administrator Sean Fox, assistant city administrator Dana Walden, public works director Eric Minor, and myself.
Okay. Ben?
I don't know. I would say we make our three council members the voting delegates, and then our city administrator, assistant city administrator, and I don't want, I don't want to make that last decision, but one of the other two split the alternate delegate spots. That'd be my, that'd be my suggestion.
Sean, would you have any recommendation from, on staff?
I think that's appropriate, as council member Seta has pointed out, three council members, myself, Dan, and Dee, as the alternates.
So let's just do it by last name, Bailey, Capps, and Jones, one, two, and three. And Sean, I'll let you pick how you want to do one, two, and three for.
We'll do it alphabetically.
All right.
By first name or last name?
Last name. And Eric, you're off the hook.
Tom? I'd like to say that it's nice to see staff stepping up and going this year. That's something that's been weak in the past, and be glad to see you there, so.
Yeah, I'm encouraged by staff going. It's always great. I know a lot of times, whereas there, we see our sister cities, and usually it's only elected officials, so it's exciting to see staff attending this year as well. Ben?
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then to elect Brandy Bailey, George Capps, and Tom Jones as voting delegates, and Sean Fox, Dee Grunder, and Dana Walden as alternate voting delegates to represent the city of Park City during the 2019 Annual League of Kansas Municipalities Conference.
And George Capps? You want a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Did you have a discussion?
Well, I would just echo what Tom was saying, and you were saying, as I have been to so many of those league meetings, and I'm tickled to death to see our staff being interested in going, because you meet people from all over the state, and you gain, you gain valuable information and resources. I learned that when I was, when I was volunteering at the police academy as a firearms instructor, I had contacts all over the state, and it really helped me out when I needed to know something from western Kansas or something. And it's going to help staff the same way. If they will just network and get with those people from those other cities, they're going to find a valuable, valuable resource. Take a lot of business cards with you.
Don't you just love it how we have 15 items on the agenda? We have these awesome staff summaries, and we can blow through this in 45 minutes because we're well-educated from staff. Thank you. All of our department heads, thank you. Jim?
Yeah, that's a great comment. I don't really have anything else other than, than to, sorry, I was grabbing my spot on the agenda here, making sure. Anyway, wish everybody a happy Labor Day weekend.
Okay, Brandy?
Sir? Mr. Mayor?
George seconded that last one.
Yeah.
Oh, we got a motion and a second?
That's why I paused.
Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes 7-0, and we'll go back to Brandy.
I have nothing.
George?
I, I don't have anything. Just have a safe, safe holiday weekend.
Yeah. Tom?
I attended a local consult meeting with KDOT today, and it's nice to see them back on the forefront of trying to figure out how to round up some money and do road projects again instead of stripping it out. The new secretary is very proactive on getting T-works going again and getting big projects going. It's kind of a kickoff in this area today. They're touring the state, and they're going to be back, so. The other thing we did is, Wampa, we had a special meeting today, and we approved an offer that's been made to a gentleman in Pennsylvania that will be coming in probably late next month, be the new director, so.
All right, Ben?
Sure do have a couple things here. One, I was talking with our assistant city administrator last week, and one of the, one of the, I don't know what the right word to use for him is, but one of the really founders of our city passed away recently, that's Matt Henderson, who started True Value and had owned it for many, many years. And I was not around when, when he started it, and I was only here for just a few years while it was open until they closed last year. But one of the great things about where we're at today is the foundation that so many of these men and women that started our community 39, 40 years ago laid for us, and we're reaping the benefits today. So to the family of Matt Henderson, I want to say thank you for your service and your commitment to our community for so many years here and that, and hopefully we can take what you all have laid and continue to build on that throughout our time that we get to serve this great city. The second thing I wanted to bring was more stark even, and that's the issue that Sedgwick County, and not just Sedgwick County, but our country is facing, and to me, this is becoming an epidemic when we're dealing with suicide rates, and those continue to climb here in our county. This Calm Care reported the highest number of recorded suicides that they have, that they know of, 101 last year in Sedgwick County, and it's a number that continues to rise. And they say that they estimate an estimated 10,000 attempts in 2018. And this is something that's very, very serious that we keep. It has been, it's been something that we've kind of swept under the rug, where we haven't wanted to talk about, issues of mental health, depression, anxiety, all these things like that, but it's becoming an epidemic here in our area. And thank you to the people at Calm Care and several other organizations who are working to try to address this, but it's sometimes just as simple as reaching out and talking to somebody, making sure that they're doing okay, sending somebody a text, sending someone a call, giving them a call, stopping by their house. There's so many little things that, growing up, we did as a, we did as a community, we'd stop by our neighbors, we'd see how they were doing, and we'd call, we didn't text because that really wasn't a thing back then, but we would take care and take involvement in our community and our neighbors, and sometimes I think it's easy to pass by nowadays because we only see each other when we're going out to work or when we're mowing the yard, but we don't really have that interaction anymore. And it's such an important thing, reach out to somebody, be a help to somebody. If you know someone's struggling, you can call Calm Care. The 24-hour community crisis hotline is 316-660-7500. It's 316-660-7500. You can also text the word CONNECT to 741-741. That's the word CONNECT to 741-741, and there's a national hotline, suicide hotline, and that's 800-273-8255. It's something that we've got to get serious about there, because the struggles and the battles and the hurt that we're seeing in our communities are very real. And so with that, I am done.
George?
Yeah, just piggyback off of that. I know some of the veterans that have come back from the wars, Iraq war, are suffering from suicide, and there's been some issues with that. There was something on TV the other night about the number per day of suicides from veterans that are coming back home. So that is an issue that needs to be addressed. If you're having issues, there are Calm Care numbers, there are places you can go to get the help that you need. I'm also encouraged by the city, the staff that are going to the Kansas municipality to that conference. I think it's important that they do so. There's a lot of resources, there's a lot of other folks there that they can tap into in doing their jobs, or even making their jobs better. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are going. I'm also encouraged by new business is going in here in Park City next to Edward Jones. I believe it's American Family Insurance, so I'm encouraged by that. So hopefully we can keep this thing going and get more business into the city. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing. I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Ben?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion.